Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety Committee. My name is Mark Conway, Chair of the Committee and Representative of the 4th District. Today I'm joined by members of the Committee, Vice Chair Zach Blanchard of the 11th District, and Paris Gray of the 8th District. Representing the Mayor's Office, I don't see Tyler around, but I'll get around to him. And for Committee staff, we have here Ethan Navarre. Today, we are having a meeting to discuss LO-25-0005 Legislative Oversight, Crime Reduction and Violence Prevention, for the purpose of holding regular hearings with the Police Department, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, and other agencies to monitor the progress of the city's crime reduction and violence prevention efforts. Today, we're going to be specifically focusing on returning citizens after having a brief preview of general crime metrics across the city. I'll say, you know, generally how we handle these hearings, we get an overall look of crime across the city before diving into a particular topic. So, we've got visitors here from DPSES. So, I appreciate you guys for making the not-so-long trek to come visit us today and really look forward to hearing your insights on issues around returning citizens. We also have other special guests here, Hail Bailey, and a couple of other nonprofit partners that are here to help us think about how we can support returning citizens. But first, I want to hand off to the Police Department to walk us through their presentation, which will talk about general crime metrics. Commissioner, Felicia.
Yeah, good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon, everyone. Just a real brief preempt, I will have to leave almost as soon as my presentation is done. I've got an emergency dental surgery. So, I'd rather stay, but unfortunately... So, I'm going to go with our clearance rate, starting off. First of all, before I even get to that, you're going to see a lot of really positive numbers today. That goes to the hard work of the men and women of the BPD, along with all our other state, federal, and city agencies, but most importantly, to the community who actually is reaching out and giving us assistance. None of the stuff that we accomplished would we be able to do by ourselves if it wasn't for all the great partnerships of everybody working together to make the city safer. So, as you'll see, our homicide clearance rate, 60%. You can see as you go down... As we go down, every single clearance rate is higher than the previous year, and it's most of them, if not all of them, are above the national average. Our homicide rates, you can see, have gone up 50% since, well, 30% to 60%, basically a complete huge increase compared to where we were. Now, we're above the national average, and that goes to the great work of the homicide detectives, but it also goes to the fact that we have less homicides. So, that's helping our detectives. The more time they have, you can see what they do when they have the time to investigate the murders. But every category is down, I mean, every category is up. Burglaries, this is a huge win that we don't look at or we don't talk about a whole lot. The national average is 14%. We are almost double the national average, and we had a huge focus on that because a lot of people, when they say they're moving out of the city or they don't want to be in the city, those are some of the things that they talk about mainly are the property crimes, the stolen autos, the burglaries. So, you'll see our stolen auto numbers are down when we get to those numbers, but the clearance rates are a huge win, and that goes back to the support of the community who's reaching out and helping us. Then, on the next slide, you'll see something that has increased significantly, as well as our narcotics violations, went from 1,341 to 1,534 this year, and some quality investigations, one of which I think is going to come out today or tomorrow, or maybe came out yesterday, about cooperation with us Delaware State Police, Maryland State Police, Baltimore County, all work together. But you'll see those, our handgun violations have gone down a little bit, not significantly, not as much to worry about, but I think that is simply because there's so many things going on in the city that we have our resources tied to a lot of different major events that have gone on and gone on in the city and represented the city well. Everything else is pretty close. The murder one is down, but we have less murders than we had last year. So, a lot of positive stats here. And then you go to gun-related crimes. Even though our guns are down 4%, we've made almost 1,000 gun arrests in patrol already this year, and over 1,000 total. And you can see each district, huge differences in the, you'll see, in the Southwest has made a huge increase. Central is still number one, even though they're down slightly, they still have a lot more guns than almost every other district in the city. But even those, those will pick up a match last year. But I go to that, to the fact that we're taking more and more guns off the street, the legislation against the ghost manufacturers, and all the other great work that's being done by us and all our partners. Then you go to homicides by district. Almost every single district is down compared to last year, and right now, we're sitting at 98 compared to 141. That's as of today, and you'll see, just two years ago, we were at 200 compared to we're less, we cut it in half. And we've set records in both April and August for the least amount of homicides per month. April had five, August had seven. Those numbers have never been, even come close to, since they started keeping the numbers in 1970. And at our shootings, the big difference there, you'll see, from 25 to 23, again, more than cut that in half for the non-fatal shootings. And we go on to robberies by district. This is one that has also come down significantly because of our clearance rates. We've reorganized our Criminal Investigation Division a little bit, citywide robbery unit, and the lieutenant is doing, and all the sergeants and detectives doing a phenomenal job. We hear it every single day on the crime call. It's all the coordination and all the intel that's sharing on a real-time basis that's helping us to reduce the amount of robberies. Then you see, we go to felony CDS, over 900 felony CDS arrests this year compared to 840 last year. And then next, you have the misdemeanor, which are also up by over 100 from year to year. Some districts significantly, the southeast up significantly. Everybody else is right about the same or a little bit higher. Central's up over 100. Then we jump to the domestic and youth violence. You'll see both of these are headed in the right direction. Really happy with almost every category that we're showing you here today. We still have a lot of work to do, even though these numbers are down, they're still higher than we want them to be. We want to continue to drive the numbers down to a point that we'll never be satisfied, and we'll never reach zero, but we want to get as close to that as possible. And you see, just the next one, it just shows our CAD proactivity, and you'll see the traffic, the amount of traffic stops that we've made. They're going to come up on the very next slide as something that not a lot of people pay attention to, but is a huge win for BPD. And then we can jump to the next slide, which is traffic fatalities. I think we'll all agree, when COVID hit, a lot of people just forgot how to drive or just decided they wanted to drive the way they want it, and we started having more and more fatal accidents. Last year, we had a total of 40 fatal accidents. This year, we're at 22, which is down 43%. And that goes back to the traffic initiative we started last year, where we concentrated on a lot of different issues that we're having. Number one, speed, and just everything that was happening that was causing these fatalities. And now, we're going to move down to even some other minor things with the scooters and mopeds and all those other small vehicles that seem to think they can go in and out of traffic without any repercussions. And then the last slide is recruitment. This is an area where we're making huge advances, 153 new recruits in 2025. The classes that we have coming out are larger. The next class, it's going to go to field training, has over 40 officers in it. We're going to run five classes in 2025, five more classes in 2026. The hope is that we can get to the point where we are winning each year, and the good thing is that with our contract, and the officer's got a raise, it's keeping the officers here as well, so we're not losing as many. We have incentives for officers, relocation to Baltimore City incentive, we're doing take-home vehicles for certain officers who have training in crisis intervention and FTO. They live in the city, they take it home. If they don't live in the city, then they keep the car, the car is theirs. And then something that we're doing, we've got 17 cadets hired compared to six in 2024, and we have, I think, 90 junior cadets. But with that, I will turn it over to Lisa Reynolds.
Good afternoon. My name's Lisa Reynolds. I am Chief of Youth and Community Partnerships at Baltimore Police Department. On this slide, we are showing the year-to-date arrests up until 9/15/25. One of the things I want to significantly point out here is that in 2025, through centralization of booking functions, we are now tracking paper referrals. Those are misdemeanor offenses that are arrests related for juveniles. If you can see, we're ending the year total 629 and 636, but in 2025, we actually have paper referrals in there. So, juvenile arrests are down, and I think we can attribute that to a lot more communication with our partners via Ustat, with all the city agencies, working with MONC, talking with the state's attorney when we bring in youth, requesting detention to get them able to go to court armed with the information, and also the youth of concern. We now meet weekly with DJAS to go over those youth and do a case review to talk about not just what police intel we have and behaviors of youth in the community, but give DJAS a chance to align their services and give them more support and opportunities needed to keep them from committing new offenses. So, I know we reported out about the Youth Advisory Board, but we've made several significant accomplishments here, so we wanted to just highlight that. Not only were we able to work with MoED this summer with the Youth Works Program to get youth input and get them paid to give that input, but we now have built out a framework where we're working with ACE Academy. So, instead of the youth coming to us, we're going to be going to the schools to have our advisory board meetings and work with the principal there to really get students engaged. Major Jenkins just attended the back-to-school night, had a lot of interest from families and youth, so we're excited to start that out, not just work around policy, but how we can interact better with youth in the community.
Good afternoon, everyone. Arnold Jenkins, Major for the Youth and Community Partnerships Division. All right, so you'll see right there that we are currently at our full capacity presently, so we are looking to expand. Earlier this year, we had lower than 50 junior cadets total. At this point now, we have reached our goal, so we are starting to think about next steps at this point. So, we actually still have over 20 Baltimore high schools represented, including Krista Ray, Amervo, Mergenthaler, Patterson, ACE, Poly, and many others, including Baltimore City College. So, we're trying to make sure that we reach out to as many schools as possible. Just looking at the planning for the meetings, we intend to make sure that we're focusing on a discussion curriculum that will prepare them from the step of being a junior cadet to potentially being a cadet, and finally, to becoming a police officer, trainee, to become an officer. So, right now, we are looking to expand capacity right now, and a part of that is also planning with our various teams within BPD to make sure that we're able to accomplish this goal. All right, next slide, please. All right, so this one is really fun to talk about. I know that Councilman Blanchard, I believe you had a discussion about the Orioles last time, so we have followed up on that. So, Jen Steyer, the Executive Assistant for the Orioles, actually, at the Senior Leadership Team, we have been in coordination with them, so I'm actually going to include them on a meeting with Ms. Phil over at Parks and Rec from Towanda, and also the Calhoun Senior Foundation. So, it's really good to see, you know, that everybody works really well together, otherwise. I know that the Orioles and the Calhoun Senior Foundation are already partnering on STEM Centers, and I think they actually just unveiled a recent one. The great thing about this program, too, is not only the summer camp, which was out in Aberdeen, it allowed myself, three sergeants, six officers, two professional members, one of whom was actually from the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention and Policy, to participate in the mentoring program. Badges for Baseball is really all about making sure that we're focusing on sportsmanship, leadership, communication, teamwork, everything that you really need to make sure that you're doing a good job in just about everything, frankly. So, it's more than just about baseball, it's about life. So, that's really why it's so important for mentoring and making sure that people also know what happens, or how to deal with maybe like a defeat or a loss, for example, and how to move forward beyond that and achieve what they need to achieve. So, really great program. The summer camp itself was actually out of Aberdeen, and I believe it's a three-quarters scale version of Camden Yards, which is pretty cool. They were able to play softball, badges for baseball games with the kids, and meet other partners as well. Towanda was a really good initiative, too. We were able to actually get input from our NCO officers, Neighborhood Coordination Officers over in the Northwest and also the Northern District. So, I want to thank both Major Saunders and Major Yorkevich for allowing that partnership between the two districts. Towanda is right on the boundary of both the Northern and the Northwest District, so both districts were able to adopt a rec center. They were able to send officers to the location one week, and then the next district would send officers to the location the following week to make sure that we have the available capacity in order to participate. So, that ran from July 14th until August 18th. Currently, of course, in a couple of days, actually, we have our meeting that was scheduled with the Orioles, Calhoun Senior Foundation, and us to see how we can continue this. It looks like, based upon how everything is going so far, the Calhoun Senior Foundation has been successful in achieving their goal that we were able to support as far as obtaining their application for funds to support a coordinator. So, now, we are actually going to have that meeting, and things are progressing. Just an example of the flyer that is on the page up there for you, that is something that one of our NCO officers put together, and so far, it's been a great program. But I did want to just give you a follow-up on your question about the Orioles connection as well. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway.
I'll open the floor to questions. This will be the first half of the meeting, and then after this, we'll have an opportunity to hear from some of the other folks on returning citizens. I'll start with one of my own. I noted that there was, one, I'll say this, things continue to look really, really great, continue to see crime trending down, even though it's already the low it's been on record, I think is really remarkable, and I think I will continue to take my hat off, I don't have one on now, but to the hard work that you guys continue to do, and I think as we continue to drive the crime rate down and to put together the systems that help us be an effective and efficient and dynamic police department, I'm still going to continue to push us to find ways to be better, but I will say, it is really encouraging to see the progress that we've made, and so I want to thank you, Commissioner, for the work that you and your team, your executive team, are doing. You know, I appreciate all the hard work you guys are putting in. I wanted to turn over to the clearance chart. This is, I think, the second or third slide. We had some pretty good metrics here, noting pretty good clearance rates, which is great. I mean, this is what we've been pushing for, for a very long time, so kudos on the great work here. I'll always ask this question, because when we do things wrong or things don't seem to be going well, we always ask why. But I think it's just as important, if not more important, to understand, when things are going well, why? So, I'll pose that question to you, Commissioner, or any of the folks that can help us understand. What are we seeing here with the clearance rates? Why are they so good? And to that effect, what more can we do to further make sure we're doing a better job closing cases?
What I think mainly is, I mean, I'd be remiss if I didn't give a lot of the credit to the men and women of the BPD, but again, we can't do it alone. It's all our partnerships that are all working together to make Baltimore safer, but I think the biggest key is that we are starting to win back the community, and I think we're getting more and more tips from the community. They're starting to trust us a little more because we've shown that we've been able to both lower crime rates and basically restore public safety and confidence in the department and reform a police department at the same time. But this is what happens when you start to see, as well, with a lot of the crime categories are down, which means there's less cases, which means our detectives have more time to spend on the cases, which allows them to get better quality investigations. And then we reorganized a couple different times, different things, and I think right now, we are about where we want to be with everything. We streamlined that our intelligence, all our Criminal Investigation Division is all under one, and I think we have everybody in the right seats, and they're all working together with all of our partners to do, to make Baltimore safer, and I think that's, it's just teamwork. Nobody can do it alone. State's Attorney, BPD, MONC, all the city agencies, and then we've got, now you see, the last couple of weekends, we've had help from state police, and we've always got school police, sheriff's office, and all of our federal partners that are here doing their investigation. So, it's a complete team effort that's accomplishing the goal.
I appreciate that. I think you said this time and time again, and I would agree 100% that the relationships and trust that the department has in the community is in part why we can continue not only to have low crime rates, but to continue to drive them down as people, you know, as we continue to rebuild that relationship and build that trust, it's really, really, really important. And it makes me think about the consent decree and our effort to fully implement the consent There's still a lot of work for us to do, and we know that. Other reports have come out saying that we still have work to do, but I do see some of those benefits. I'd be very curious, and I know you could not share this here, but what data we have to the number of folks that have been helpful in cases, whether informants or otherwise, but it is helpful to know that we're getting more of that cooperation, which allows us to close these cases and get some of the certainly violent folks off the streets. It's a really, really important part of the equipment that we need to succeed. So, the other question that I had, speaking of the consent decree, there's a chart around proactivity, which is, it's slide 11, that just kind of gives a sense of proactive business checks, foot patrol, traffic enforcement, and bike patrol in each respective district. I think this is helpful. It would be helpful to see how this is changing relative to previous years. I know one of the requirements in the consent decree is, I think, to get to, was it 40% of officers' time to be proactive work, whether it's foot patrol or business checks. I'd be very curious, to that end, how close we are to getting there? And I don't know if you know this anecdotally off the top of your head, but by way of officer time, how close are we getting to that, I think, 40% goal?
Yeah.
What's the goal first?
I don't think we're real close yet. I think we're probably in the 20s, if I had to guess.
Okay.
And that's still, that is mainly because of the shortage in officers. We're still over four, almost 500 officers short. The majority of those are, a good portion of those are in patrol, so lots of times, we still have 20% to 25% of our officers work in patrol almost every day or on an overtime basis or a drafting basis where we're forcing them to work. We're trying to get away from that, and we've done a really good job with that, but as I think, as we get more and more officers coming out of the academy, quicker, bigger classes, I'll see, you'll see that start to go down, and then the fact that we're not, we have other ways to handle calls through 311, you can go online, we have the telephone reporting unit, so we're doing a lot of things to try to keep our officers free to be able to do the proactivity that we want them to do. We'll get there, I think.
You know, to the PC's point, I think one of the hardest things that we're still trying to muddle our way through is how do we effectively track proactivity and community engagement, right? So, you know, we're limited to specific CAD entries of what the officers are doing, so they can be out doing something proactively, and if they don't document it through CAD, it's never going to be captured, because sometimes it's just me being me and interacting with the child and fixing a bike or doing something, and they never get on the radio because they're on foot or they're on a business check, but they don't stop that to say, "But I also did this." So, it's about us educating the officers of when it does transition, when it changes, making sure you document that. So, that's one of the things we also are trying to tweak as well.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. I think this is probably, I don't know how long we've been tracking proactivity, but I would imagine it is pretty tricky to track. That said, I think probably one of the things that would be helpful is tracking the negative. Like, if we know that someone is on calls and responding to calls 80% of the time, there's only a 20% availability for proactivity, so at best, if 100% of their otherwise time, they're using it for proactivity, the best it could be is 20%. So, yeah, I think that's a helpful metric. I think, you know, part of the reason why I think proactivity is really, really important is because often what I'll hear from, and we perennially hear this from constituents, is concerns about getting officers out there in the community, a sort of like community policing component, like building those relationships and to what we just said, Commissioner, building those relationships. They want to see the officers that walk the beat, get out of their cars, and we're always trying to find ways to do that. So, you know, I think the proactivity piece is going to be, however we measure it, if it's the way that we have it here in this chart, or the negative, you know, when they're not on calls, we assume that they're doing proactive work or paperwork, I think is going to be pretty important for us. But, yeah. All right, I'm going to turn it over to my committee members.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is this the first time y'all have shown the traffic fatalities? Is that slide normally on there? That's, um, yes, it is? It's a new one?
Yes, it is a new slide.
Okay, yeah, cool. That, um...
It's a very good suggestion by Lieutenant Colonel Correll back there, where we, the Commissioner's talked about it, talked about it in ComStat, but we decided to include it.
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate you having it on there. I, um, who, so, just maybe as an aside, I'd love to get a meeting with whoever runs the ARU and just understand how that works, and obviously, there's a BPD component of this, and there's also a DOT component of this, and just understanding how we are creating a, you know, just because the person who killed you with the car didn't mean to kill you with the car, doesn't mean it's not a tragedy in this, you know, and making sure that we're focused on that as well is really important, so. Moving on, the side note, and thank you, Major Arnold, for the badges for baseball update. Very cool. Definitely need to get up there for next summer's camp, see what you've got going on. But, so I want to talk about the recruitment and the cadets and the junior cadets program this might be for the major, but so, just so I'm understanding it, so a cadet is, they are under 21, and I guess what does a, what does a cadet do, and how do they become or not become a trainee?
So, to answer that question, sir, so, let me see. We have the cadet program, which is going to be between 18 and 20 and a half, that is a paid position. You're also going to have the junior cadet program, so that is a voluntary signup position. So, essentially, you just fill out an application. Permission for parents are required, of course, for the junior cadets. When you actually get into the cadet program itself, part of why it's so good is that you will do two and a half years as a cadet before you become a trainee, which takes time off of your retirement as well, too, which allows you to retire within 22 and a half years. So, that is a positive aspect of signing up to be a cadet. They start around $31,000 roughly, and then, of course, starting police officer salary, once you get to that point, is around $74,000 at this point.
Okay. So, so you mentioned cadets, junior cadets. What's the, so the junior cadet program is a voluntary thing, and so they can, can, once they graduate from high school, they can then become cadets?
Correct. So, they do have to apply for it. So, the difference being that, once you're a junior cadet, you're having more exposure to the Police Department, you have better understanding of practices, culture, that kind of thing. It allows you to explore different things like forensics, for example, community policing. In some cases, some of the activities that they've done as well have included, you know, for example, a turkey giveaway or just going to a community meeting, that kind of thing, to show the interaction and partnerships between the Police Department and the community. We've also done other things such as, I think, ice skating, for example, Johns Hopkins... We've also done other things such as, I think, ice skating, for example, Johns Hopkins, various different things too. Just trying to integrate fun activities to keep people interested too. But it also allows them the opportunity to see things like Foxtrot or helicopter over at the hangar. Just things that are captivating and actually provide useful information so that they're better prepared when they choose to go into the cadet program, for example.
And do you, do you have any sense of the number of cadets that were junior cadets? Like what does that pipeline look like?
So it's low, I'll say that. We do have an example of someone recently who actually went through the Patterson High School Public Safety Program. He started out as a junior cadet, or as an explorer, rather, when they were still called that. And then he actually became a cadet and then became, in fact, a police officer recently. So he actually just went through a training academy. So if he hasn't graduated already, he will now. But it's actually a relatively rare thing. So we are seeing progress in that this is the first story that we have to tell in a long time, frankly. So we are seeing positive momentum.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's good to know. And I'm sure the junior cadet program has a bunch of good things that are happening that, you know, are good activities that still, still apply even if you don't end up becoming a cadet afterwards. But, but obviously going back to this whole idea of having, you know, pipelines into career readiness from city schools and also making sure that our sworn officers have a, you know, we've got a good representation from people who grew up in the community as well. That's, that's certainly something that I'd be interested in learning more about, what, what can be done to, to strengthen that, that, uh, the pipeline aspect of the program.
Absolutely. So part of what we're doing right now is as we get our youth advisory board off the ground, frankly, we've been more involved with schools and really partnering with not only principals, but also the educators themselves and teachers is really important. When we actually hosted the table over at Ace Academy recently, I had people asking me about becoming a police officer. I had people asking me about the cadet program, youth advisory board too. But they're all really integrated because when you start at that level, you're seeing a lot of interest in different things that fit different needs for different people. So that is a really good thing.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you, Major. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Gray?
And as a point of focus, I also wanted to mention the apprenticeship program as well. I don't know exactly where that falls into the cadet program, but I just wanted to ensure that we are still maintaining the apprenticeship program. So if you could just speak a little bit about that, please?
Yes, sir. So I will say that recruitment is going to have a component of that question too. For what I can speak on with the public safety apprenticeship program, something that we did with specifically our youth workers was we actually involved them in a youth advisory board. So we did discuss topics like 2015 civil unrest. That was something that we went over. Something else that we're going to be discussing during these youth advisory boards is also going to be police policy as well because we do want young people to give us feedback on these policies so we can better adapt them to make sure that they're suited to the communities that we are serving.
And so the apprenticeship program is just doing youth work?
So it's a combination, really. So we have the component with the junior cadets. I think it's a part of that entire bill, the recent law. So you're going to have the recruitment aspect of it. You're going to have also junior cadets. You're also going to additionally be on that, be looking at the breakdown of who is actually in each group for the junior cadets too. So we took a look at that and we're able to try and make sure it's going to be as diverse as possible too, by reaching out to many different schools. Just looking at the, the program too, overall, it's a good opportunity just to make sure that we're reaching out not only for the junior cadet program, the cadet program, police officers, youth advisory board, and just building relationships, frankly.
Yep. And I love everything I'm hearing. I just want to ensure that the purpose of the apprenticeship program is to, as you guys are doing with the junior cadet, is to funnel kid out youth into the police department in whatever capacity they would like, whether it's patrol, whether it's in the office.
Yes.
And so just ensuring that, that the intent of what the bill was is still being, there's still a follow-through with it.
Correct. So I do know from recruitment's response that I have knowledge of. I believe that they have been assisting with getting cadets' driver's licenses so they can actually be prepared once they're ready to become police officers. So that has actually been a part of the program. I think Major Johnson kicked that off initially, but it's continuing as well. So trying to make things more accessible to people, removing barriers and obstacles is a key highlight, something that we're trying to do as well. But that's something that we're focusing on too, sir.
To the major's point, he's correct. So it's the driver's license for free, credits towards college tuition support, and assist them in learning the newest and latest technology.
If, if I can make a request on behalf of the committee and light some of the questions around the youth program. I, I know there are some still difficulties that we're trying to work out, recruiting folks, keeping them in the program, making sure they have the proper supports. I think it'd be helpful if you guys can just give an update on that piece as well. Like how is it going so far? Where are we seeing pain points? And if you have recommendations on how we might either change the program or better support young people that are being considered in the program? Because I think we all want to see this program not only exist, but truly succeed and help recruit young people that eventually become officers within our department. So if for, Councilman, I know this, this is something that I know you worked on before coming on the council and probably something you probably still want to follow up on. What might be an appropriate time? Let me see, 30 days? All right, so in the next month, if we can maybe have an update on how the, how the program's going, I think that'd be helpful.
Yes, Mr. Conaway. If I may, just to add something additional. I believe with regards to the public safety apprenticeship program, if you're also potentially talking about the Patterson High School program that we have, which is public safety based, that was something that our officer Cromer really got off the ground, frankly, along with the fire department. So making sure that we have a presence within schools so that there is a track actually within some high schools for public safety in particular. That was an important part of why Patterson was involved in that process.
Yeah. And the program's been running for about two years now? Or we passed the bill maybe two years ago, but it's been running for maybe a year? Is that right?
So I believe the program itself that I'm referring to might be different, but it's related, if that makes sense. So it is a school program, but it's not specifically within the bill that you're describing, I believe.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? I got one more before I forget. We talked a little bit, Councilman Blanchard asked a question around the traffic fatalities, and it made me think about traffic enforcement. And if we've seen any change in traffic enforcement that may have played a role in the fatalities or even, you know, reckless driving throughout the city. You guys know just as well as everybody else knows here, sometimes we have folks who just completely ignore traffic laws, especially folks who tend to have Virginia tags. I know this is an issue that they're working with, you know, working on in Annapolis, but I know it's something we continue to see around the city. I'm curious, have we done anything around traffic enforcement that is new or different? And has that maybe changed any behavior?
Yes, sir. So initially since, you know, COVID, we did, department-wide, we instituted a fatal crash reduction team that was focusing on specific,
Can you speak into the mic?
I'm sorry. We, since COVID, we realized the, uh, the increase in fatalities, we created a fatal crash reduction team. Once we applied them to specific areas where we were seeing a lot of density for this, but, and they, they would redeploy as necessary. We've seen this reduction, thus we've transitioned that team to some other areas where we're doing traffic enforcement. So it's still a, a redeployment and a focus of our motors unit, of our traffic unit, to focus on these things. I'll pass it to, to Colonel Lee for his specifics since he oversees that. But it's always on our radar, but since we've seen that reduction, the request for them and the training for them and their need has definitely changed based on what we're seeing in the change in reduction in fatalities.
For the record, Ryan Lee, Chief of Patrol. We're, not only are we taking dedicated traffic resources, using data to focus them as well as including community complaints to focus them into primaries, we're also emphasizing traffic as a primary mechanism of community contact and enforcement for the entire patrol division. So all nine districts, that's an emphasized effort for contact. They're on top of contacting numerous individuals of the community in primaries where we're not just seeing traffic-related problems, but criminal-related activity and the benefits from that. We're seeing significant reductions in fatal crashes in the city. I don't want to misquote the number. It eludes me, but it's in the 40% plus reduction range year-to-date for fatalities from last year this time. Traffic enforcement is one of the few things in policing that we know by increasing enforcement and education, we actually see significant reductions. So we're seeing less significant injury clashes, less fatal crashes. With a focused effort on it, we're exploring new options to expand our ability to do more directed traffic enforcement as well.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's good to see the fatalities go down. It's, to your point, fatalities have gone down 43.2%, which is, which is great, great news. And I think we, we still have, regardless of the fatalities, the sort of reckless driving and just complete disregard of speed limits, stop signs, red lights, U-turns, you call it. They're out there doing it, and I, I see it all the time. And I really worry that I'm going to be going through a green light one day and someone's blowing through a red light. And that, that could be really tragic. So, you know, I really wonder what more we can do. If there's anything more comprehensive, certainly there's considerations at the legal level in Annapolis around Virginia tags. Every single time that this has happened, it's been a car with a Virginia tag that I've seen, which is just insane because I would expect that in Maryland, we'd see more Maryland tag cars doing some of this stuff, but that's not what I see. It's the Virginia tags time and time and time again. And I would probably say we all see it. It's, it's, it's a lot. So I'm, I'm curious what we can do, either how the council can support, whether it's advocating for something here at the local level or potentially at the state level that might help us be more effective in addressing that issue and just generally traffic issues throughout the city. Because I think there's a perception that unless there's like a camera there, you're probably going to get away with whatever you do while driving. So, you know, just something, you know, I've spoken to a lot of fathers who have children and worry about their kids on sidewalks, not in the street, but on sidewalks in part because of some of the speeding and reckless driving that we see around the city. So this is an issue that we've been dealing with for a really long time. And I don't think it's going to go away easily, but I do think we, something's got to change, and I'm not sure where it changes. So maybe it's something we can discuss and look at our options. We're not going to solve it here, but it's a frustrating point, I would say, for a lot of folks.
Well, I can help, help a little bit too is because what happened is Virginia didn't do us any favors. Virginia was just handing out tags without any Virginia address. So we have Maryland residents with Virginia tags. But we put out some guidance last month about the requirements when you have a Virginia tag. We, we start, we'll start doing, I'm not going to tell you what we're going to do because our officers are going to do it. And if the Virginia tag shouldn't be on the car or there's a Maryland tag that should have been on the car, we have avenues to abate that. But what, I, I think Virginia has stopped that now, but there's so many Virginia tags in the city. So every time we see a problem like that, you're also going to see more and more. We started this a couple of years ago, just pushing more and more vehicle stops, just vehicle stops. Because as we increase the numbers, we're going to start pulling over more of those problem drivers and getting them off the street. But now a lot of the emphasis that, that I'd like to see our focus on, quite honestly, are these mopeds, scooters, that just seem to think they can drive in and out of traffic without any, there are laws that they have to obey as well, and we put guidance out for that. And you'll start to see several, we've had several car stops where we've gotten handguns out of, or vehicle stops from people on mopeds, dirt bikes. So we were, that is the biggest push for us is, is vehicle stops. And we have, uh, we're going to be having a, within the next month, we'll have a traffic officer in each district. That will be their sole function each day is to do traffic stops.
That's good to hear. I, I think we'll, we'll continue these kind of conversations on traffic. I think it's a tricky problem because it's everywhere all the time and you can't possibly be everywhere all the time. But happy to hear that we're putting a focus on this in respective districts. All right, any further questions for the police department? I understand that the commissioner's got to run for an emergency. I want to thank you. All right. Thank you, Commissioner. If you do have to go, you're welcome to. I know we're going to have Aaron here to hold down the police department. To that end, we're going to turn over to the second half of our hearing with a focus on returning citizens. We've got some guests here today, DPSCS and parole probation. We've got folks from Papeire joining us virtually. And we've got a good friend of mine, Harold Bailey, to kind of speak from his personal experience. I'm going to start off with DPSCS before we get into MONC, and I think MOED, employment development, will also present it. There we go. All right, so we'll start with DPSCS. And please say your name for the record and maybe even introduce the folks who are here with you for the record.
Sure. Thank you so much. Before I begin this afternoon, I would just like to extend my wishes to all who are celebrating today. Lashonat Tova, and Happy New Year, everybody. Today I have, my, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about DPSCS reentry. My name is Ellen Rappaport, Executive Director of Reentry Services for DPSCS. And I also have my colleague, Assistant Secretary Guarino, who is in charge of all of the data. Reentry is not just about helping someone find their footing. It's about making sure people have the tools to successfully navigate transition to the community so they do not return to prison. Equally important is the acknowledgement that the incarcerated individual's active involvement in this process is essential for their success. The goal of the reentry unit, unit's commitment is to reduce recidivism and help people succeed in the community. At 180 days prior to release, our reentry team conducts, conducts an exit orientation interview, which includes a needs assessment to evaluate each individual's specific needs before release. Each individual is different, has different circumstances, and by identifying those needs early, we can work with the individual to create a specific reentry plan for them. There are critical areas the DPSCS multidisciplinary team believe are essential to making reentry effective, not in any particular order. Community connections, meaning family, mentor, and local organizations providing support. Housing, stable and affordable options. Employment, job readiness, training, and partnerships with local businesses. Behavioral health, access to mental health and substance use treatment. Education and skills, vocational training, higher education, and GED programming. The key is starting early. Reentry preparation starts at intake and continues throughout incarceration. Providing the incarcerated individual with opportunities along the way to build skills, supports, and connections on the inside before they leave custody will give the best chance of succeeding outside in the community. Preparing, preparing individuals is only half of the equation. We must educate our community how to receive and how to support our returning citizens. I would like to share a couple of innovative ways DPSCS educates our community members. Recently, DPSCS provided a hands-on simulation held at the War Memorial in Baltimore City that guided members through a path of a returning citizen. Participants took on the role of someone just released and navigated the same challenges, obtaining vital documents, finding housing, applying for jobs, assessing, accessing treatment, and meeting supervision requirements. This builds empathy by showing how overwhelming reentry can feel while educating not only the public, but service providers and employers about real barriers the returning citizen faces. Participants reported they left with a better understanding of why reentry support matters and created momentum that strengthens new partnerships and fosters community solutions. and created momentum that strengthens new partnerships and fosters community solutions. Another innovative approach to educating community partners is that DPSCS hosts 12 to 15 resource fairs a year within the facility statewide. Community agencies are invited inside the facility to meet directly with incarcerated individuals before release. This creates an opportunity for the incarcerated individual to meet with and leave with concrete contacts. By opening the facility doors to community partners, we help incarcerated individuals connect to jobs, housing, healthcare, mentors before release. This builds relationship and trust before returning home, creating a warm handoff to community resources. DPSCS is pleased to share that our Baltimore City partners, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, Department of Labor and American Job Centers, Goodwill Industries, ROKA Living Classrooms, Turnaround Tuesday, Baltimore City Health Department, Healthcare for the Homeless, Healthcare Access Maryland, Center for Urban Families, and so many more city partners have participated in our resource fairs, even on the eastern shore. And the collaboration and support of large network of the Baltimore City community provides returning individuals with connections and support needed upon release. Reentry works best when preparation inside meets opportunity outside. Together, we can ensure that returning citizens don't just go back home, they go back ready to contribute to the community, making our neighborhoods safer, our families stronger, and our city healthier. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon to share a brief overview of our reentry and work that we're doing alongside our community partners to support returning citizens in the community. I'd like to pass this off to my colleague, Assistant Secretary Garino, to review data trends and recidivism.
Good afternoon, and thank you, members of the council. My name is Angelina Greeno. I'm the Assistant Secretary of Data Policy and Grants within DPSCS, and I'm here to discuss the state's recidivism rates and specifically impacts and reflections upon Baltimore City. To begin, I think it's very important to get a kind of baseline context for where this fits within the history of public safety within Maryland and those measurements. The state's definition of recidivism has changed drastically over the past 20 years, which makes historical comparison difficult, but one general trend has stayed consistent, which is that Maryland's three-year recidivism rate has decreased subtly since 1997. Since the state fiscal year 2016, the state measures recidivism according to a three-year timeline, which is standard within criminal justice as a longitudinal outcome, and includes three criteria for recidivating. That includes conviction to Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services, so for a state-eligible offense; return for any reason within a three-year period; or initiation of a probation case within the community. That last component is one that is rather unique to Maryland, but more accurately reflects the entirety of an individual's potential interaction with the Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services, regardless of whether or not it's preceded directly by a period of incarceration. What does that mean kind of for all of us on a day-to-day, to break it down a little more easily? For every 10 people that go home every year from a DPSCS facility, regardless of how long they were there, three of them will come back to touch to the department in any way, whether that's probation after a year, whether that's return for a technical revocation, or whether that's conviction for a new offense and return sentencing to DPSCS. But of those three, only one, on average, will come back for a new offense. So it's very important to disambiguate recidivism, to really understand how it should inform our public safety strategy, that recidivating does not necessarily mean committing a new offense within our communities. So when Maryland was able to calculate recidivism again in 2016, it stood at 37.1% and has remained consistently below the national average of 39% since then. Like most other states, we saw a decrease during the COVID period due to differences in criminal justice operations, as well as just public patterns of behavior and limited movement. But that steady decrease has remained when we consider the current rates and what our normal was prior to COVID. So we did not see an increase, even after the implementation of the Justice Reinvestment Act, which reduced some of those nonviolent sentences to prison. The impact of community supervision, as Director Rappaport spoke to, is really significant when it comes to the day-to-day experience of those returning from incarceration, because 74% of them, on average, return under some form of community supervision. So that may mean they're released on parole, or they're released with a period of mandatory supervision that could range from 30 days to 12 months. But recidivism is generally something that is driven by two primary trends that we see consistently in our data, and that's age at the time of release and the conditions under which someone was released. So recidivism is generally driven by higher rates amongst younger adults. That's not unique to Maryland or even the United States. So emerging adults, those between aged 18 and 26, have the highest recidivism rate at 43.8%, compared to 11.9% for individuals who are, say, age 65 or older at the time of release. But the other large disparity affecting rates are the conditions under which someone is released, for example, the supervision that I mentioned before. So the difference between someone who is released onto some form of community supervision, those individuals have a greater set of responsibilities in order to remain compliant than an average, everyday citizen, including standards of behavior that do not involve criminal activity. So that's one of the drivers that we see when we see that individuals come back to incarceration for technical revocations. Those are responsible for 40% of the state's recidivism, but don't constitute a new criminal offense. There are large drivers specifically in first-year recidivism, which is when recidivism tends to be the highest. And on average, individuals return to prison sooner for a revocation than they do for a newer crime. But individuals who've been released on continued supervision, so individuals who've maybe been released before and struggled in that reentry period, especially initially after release, they have the highest rate of coming back at about 44%, so equivalent to what we see for emerging adults. But that group, it's really important to note, does not return for new offenses more than other release groups. So only 16.9% of those released on any form of continued supervision in FY21 were returned for a new offense within three years. The department doesn't measure recidivism based on where an individual returns home to. It's evaluated categorically for everyone, but we do see some breakdowns of outcomes based upon sentencing jurisdiction, so that's what we do have that's specific to Baltimore City. But I will note that individuals sentenced in Baltimore City, they had an overall higher recidivism rate than the state rate. So Baltimore City sentenced individuals returned at 35.2% compared to 32.15% for the state. But as we all know, working in public safety, just because someone is charged in Baltimore City, and that's the sentence that they're adjudicated on, doesn't mean that they lived in Baltimore City at the time of that incident, lived in Baltimore City after release, and approximately 16% of the released population have sentences from multiple jurisdictions. But one thing that makes Baltimore City unique is that this is the only jurisdiction in which the state is also in charge of local detention, which is a circumstance shared by less than a handful of other states in the nation. So individuals do also return from DPSCS custody after short-term jail sentences, which tend to be 18 months or less. So individuals leaving under that group have a slightly higher recidivism rate, 33.61%, compared to those with lengthier sentences. But that also is not an outlier. It's very common to see a higher rate of recidivism for individuals coming from local detention than from state detention.
You guys done? Awesome. Really, really helpful. It looks like you were reading from a report. Would you be able to share that, or is that available somewhere?
Certainly. Those were just my personal notes, but we elaborate all of this in 27 pages of colored graft glory in our annual Joint Chairman's Report, which is available publicly. We'd be happy to share the latest copy.
Okay, I'll make sure we comb through that. I think it's interesting, as you were talking, you made it a lot more complicated than I appreciated, but I also appreciate there's a lot of nuance in the data. And I think as we, as a city, try to figure out how we support folks who are returning from prison, you know, having understanding of all those nuances are important, who's coming back for parole and probation, who's coming out without any requirements, and the difference in expectations for both of those people, and their likelihood of recidivating, age and so on and so forth. So I appreciated all those points. I'm going to do this, I'm going to offer a round of questions, because you threw out a lot there, and I'm sure my colleagues have thoughts or questions, and if they don't, then we can move on and come back to you at the end. But folks, are any quick questions before we move on to the next presentation?
There's a lot.
He has questions, but he can't think of the questions at the moment. I'll make sure we get back to you. Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate you. To that end, I'm going to turn over to Monty for their presentation.
Thank you, Chair Conway, Councilman Blanter, and Councilman Gray. Stephanie Mavron is Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. I want to recognize some members of my team who are here in the audience, as well as just a thank you to the staff of the Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services. I think having that grounding in the data allows us to have a richer conversation here. And also, our partners from the Mayor's Office of Employment Development also saw partners from the University of Maryland Baltimore embrace reentry and resource centers, so really just a demonstration of some of the partnership that we're leveraging here at the local level. All right, perfect. So just by way of background, you know, we see roughly 2,000 people reenter Baltimore annually. City residents make up about 40% of the total prison population, despite accounting for just 9% of the state's general population, which, you know, hence the need for robust and coordinated support to ensure that we are doing everything we can to prevent the risk of recidivism and ensure long-term stability. This was a goal outlined in Baltimore's Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan. We are in the final year of implementation of that first five-year plan, and will soon be developing that next five-year plan, which we'll present to the city council. There were a few goals established in that, establishing the Reentry Action Council, a group that's been convened, which we're in the process of officially appointing. I think we just closed the first round of applications for that council, launching the Returning Citizens Behind the Wall Initiative. I'll share some metrics from that. This was something that we were able to do with American Rescue Plan Act funds. The program is currently ended, just from the end of ARPA funds, but definitely are looking for ways to continue that work as we move forward. The development of safe return plans for returning citizens prior to release, I'll share some more in just a few slides about that, but that's really the heart of our work, making sure that we can join with the reentry planning that's happening at DPSCS and continue to work with people when they make that transition home and from there. And then also officially standing up the Office of Returning Citizens. We are in the phase of building out what that looks like. This legislation was signed into law in April 2024, and so working on kind of a multi-year plan for growing that. It was, of course, passed without a corresponding budget note or additional positions, and so just trying to do what we can do to be creative there as we continue the work. So these three core components, I would say, are the heart of Monty's reentry approach. Of course, beginning reentry planning prior to release, this is one of the things that for Mayor Scott has been a clear mandate in our approach for reentry. We can't assume that people will be successful if we're not doing everything we can well in advance of their release to ensure that those barriers are removed and that they have what they need to be successful. And so this is where our strong partnership comes in with DPSCS, and we're actively having conversations about how we can expand that to reach even more people beyond the initial population that we've been reaching. Supporting returning citizens post-release, maintaining that connection upon release for the folks that we worked with behind the wall, while also providing general support for returning citizens. I can tell you, just being out setting up our table two times a week in Penn North, the number of returning citizens that we engage with and make connections with, whether they're a few days out, a couple of weeks out, a few years out, there's definitely that need for a local central hub for these services, and that's what we're aspiring to build here. And then through it all, really centering the perspectives and experiences of our returning citizens, we want to make sure the people with lived experience of incarceration can directly inform policy and programs here in the city. And so just to jump right into the work of safe return planning, I've talked a little bit about what this was. Essentially, what we've been doing is developing personalized reentry plans for people while they are still serving out their sentence, typically working with them up to 18 months prior to their release. This includes monthly case management meetings, connections to services, and contact after release to ensure follow-up is happening. We started this work with our Returning Citizens Behind the Wall initiative, so really working with that population of people who were returning home to Baltimore City, who were also eligible for work release. And we've expanded that to additional people at the Baltimore City Correctional Center, in addition to incorporating, more recently, the Maryland Correctional Institute for Women. And then we've also, as I mentioned, been doing some of this safe return planning work for people who are technically already returned, but who need some additional support and planning since their release. So just to look at what we've been able to do so far, and I'll caveat this by saying, on Monty's staff, we have one dedicated reentry coordinator. So the numbers that you see here are the work product of one staff member who's currently carrying out this work. I'll talk in a little bit about some of the things that are to come that will allow us to expand our staffing capacity there. But we've developed 224 safe return plans to date, 183 of which were developed pre-release, and then you can see the 41 or so that we've developed in working with people just through our community engagement events, stabilization events, and other things. I know one of the questions that was posed by the council as we were coming into this hearing was just really to get into what are the greatest needs that we're seeing for people who are returning home? And so just looking through those safe return plans that we've developed to date, you could see a tabulation of the kinds of needs that are showing up in those plans. Housing, by far, probably not a surprise to anyone, is the number one need, and is also one of the hardest and most challenging things to come by. It's one of the areas, as I talk to other providers, advocates in this space, it is certainly the number one need and probably the number one determining factor for someone's success. Employment is a close second, and mental health support, peer support, substance use treatment, education, many more that aren't included on this slide, but just to kind of give what we're seeing so far from some of the folks that we've been working with. I mentioned at the top our work with Returning Citizens Behind the Wall. This was an initiative that we launched in spring of 2023 with American Rescue Plan Act funds. A little under a million-dollar investment went into that work, and we wrapped up our efforts here, I think around July of this year. We supported 199 people who were preparing to return home to Baltimore, connecting them to meaningful $15-an-hour employment opportunities, skills training. This also was paired with the work of safe return plans. One of the things, and we did this work, I should mention, in partnership with Employment Development and Baltimore City Recreation and Parks. As everyone may be aware, for work release, people who are incarcerated, they are receiving a set wage, I think around $3 an hour. So the balance of that $15 an hour is something that would be saved, and upon release of that incarcerated individual, they would get everything that they had accrued, really to help them in that next phase of their life. So we saw 80% of people who have been released so far, there's still some folks who participated who haven't yet had their release date, were being released with at least $10,000 in accumulated wages, and so really a significant amount to start and invest in that next phase of life. This is something that I would absolutely love to see continue, and I've had some preliminary conversations, you know, with the Budget Office and others about how we might be able to do that. I know Department of Public Works, other city agencies have been interested in becoming a part of this, and we'd also love, to the extent possible, to see this kind of work release also go beyond the role of physical labor-type jobs. I think those are sort of the easiest connections that have been made to date, but certainly would love to see that expanded, and it was a great way for us to do some deep engagement with folks returning home to Baltimore. Because the numbers only tell one part of the story, I wanted to share just one story of transformation for one of our participants. And you can see from this quote here, "It gave me money to help me build a life. Parks and Recs really helped me. It gave me something positive to look forward to. I looked at all the positive aspects of being in the program. I've been a taker all my life, and now I'm a giver. It's a wonderful feeling to be able to help people, and I'm proud of myself, because I never thought I'd be where I am in life, and I'm not going to take it for granted." Just one of the testimonies from one of the participants in this work. We also talked to that person's son, who also recognized and noticed some of the transformation in their father's life through participation in the program and connection to some of those additional supports. And so I think just a testimony that this is the kind of work that we should absolutely be investing in and seeking ways to expand. All right. So I mentioned at the top some of the kind of creative ways, some of the ways that we're trying to go and look for additional funds to provide direct support for people returning home to Baltimore City, also looking for... also looking for funds that we can use to begin to expand the staffing of, you know, what will be the Office of Returning Citizens. In fiscal year '25, we were awarded a little over $278,000 for an innovative transitional housing initiative, which provided returning citizens across Baltimore. We served 33 people throughout this grant period who were returning home to Baltimore with security deposit and six months' rent, a pretty significant investment to help people get set up. We identified landlords in Baltimore City and Baltimore County who worked with us in this initiative, and we're really grateful that we, just a few months ago, received notice that we were, again, awarded a slightly increased amount in fiscal year '26 to continue this transitional housing work. In the funds that we've received in fiscal year '26, we also received funding for a housing coordinator. And so I think that position may already be posted as of earlier this week. We're working through the Board of Estimates process now, but this is going to be, you know, the first way we're able to continue to increase the staffing of this office. And then one other really important way that we are continuing to grow and build partnerships involves our Group Violence Reduction Strategy. Our GPRS lane is actively working with the Reentry and Transition Service Unit within DPSES to do the work of delivering custom notifications to people behind the wall, people who are soon to be returning home to Baltimore City, who qualify, identified as being associated with group violence dynamics. Having that custom notification, the same way we might do in the community, but doing that while they're actually behind the wall. This work was just getting started around the end of last year. And so we've conducted 18 of those custom notifications so far with participants and have a few upcoming, as well as people who are under the supervision of parole and probation. So really looking at all the connection points that we can make in this work. My last slide here just is regarding sort of the future of reentry work, kind of at a high level. Of course, first on the list is really getting the investment and building out and promoting the Office of Returning Citizens within Monty. We have a lot of great partners in the reentry space in the city of Baltimore. I think we seek to be a central hub for people at the local level who need support, who may be returning citizens, to help people coordinate and navigate that system on their own and continue to deepen our partnership with the Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services Behind the Wall. We want to, to that end, strengthen our key partnerships. We want to expand our pre- and post-release case management for people returning home, including youth. I think that's a really key piece. I know we just had a great discussion with our DPSES partners about this. And also, as well as people who are detained pre-trial, people who may be serving time pre-trial for a few weeks or a few months, really important still to make that connection so that we're not seeing people come back into our institutions. And then formally appointing the Reentry Action Council. So I mentioned, I think, as of the 20th, it was our first cutoff for applications. I will say publicly, though, applications are accepted on a rolling basis. So if there are folks listening to or attending this hearing who are interested in serving in this body, which really is going to advise on policies and reforms for the mayor, for the city council, that please go out and fill out that application. We'll do some promotion of that as well. But these names will then be coming through the city council as formal executive appointments, at which time the body will be officially appointed. We have been convening some people under the banner of the Reentry Action Council in a informal way, really just discussing some of the areas of focus for a future council, discussing experiences of our returning citizens, making connections between businesses who really want to be supportive in this area and want to be leaders in this area. And so there's a lot of interest, and we want to serve as that home here at the local level. And so with that, I will turn it over to my colleagues at the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, if that's okay.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairman Conway and council members. I'm honored to be here today to address this city council hearing. My name is Craig Lewis. I'm the Assistant Director, Chief of Adult Services with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development. And with me is my colleague Greg Alexander, Workforce Manager of our Reentry Center at the Northwest Career Center. It is both a privilege and a responsibility to advocate for returning citizens and the wraparound services needed to reduce recidivism. As some of you may know, MOED operates the Reentry Center at the Northwest Career Center, the largest provider of reentry services in Baltimore City. Annually, we serve 1,800 justice-involved individuals, including at least 500 individuals that are on active supervision. As this body knows, each year, thousands of Baltimore residents return home from incarceration with the determination to rebuild their lives. MOED meets them where they are by providing wraparound services, such as employment readiness, skills training, case management, along with other supportive services like transportation, housing referrals, assistance with ID documentation, stipends, milestones, incentives. We also partner with employers to expand hiring opportunities to create pathways to families sustaining wages. And by integrating workforce development with strong community and social supports, MOED helps reduce recidivism and contribute to safer, more vibrant neighborhoods. I think our center shows that when returning citizens are given the tools and the opportunity to succeed, they not only transform their own lives, but also strengthen the economic and social fabric of Baltimore City. I look forward to sharing more details on our strategies and impact and the work that we're doing to support our returning citizens. And very quickly, I just want to run through some of the slides that speak to our work. Through an agreement with DPSES, we're funded, as I mentioned earlier, to serve 1,800 justice-involved individuals with a minimum of 500 under active supervision, with a placement goal of 400 individuals placed in unsubsidized employment. We also have another grant that we received from the General Assembly, and this is our DECREE, which is the District Court of Reentry Project. This is a diversion program that allows individuals who may be, well, as a condition of probation or in lieu of jail, they can participate in a workforce program. Also, we get some general funds from the city to support individuals who are justice-involved or returning citizens. And so this program engages them in job readiness, resume building, and life skills. And also, we connect individuals to occupational skills training in some targeted sectors. We also receive funding that is strictly for folks who are incarcerated 180 days or less, or I should say 180 days, and that is to engage them in occupational skills training and also provide them with some wraparound support, such as transportation, stipends, and milestone incentives. And these are some of the barriers that we see at our reentry center. And we support numerous individuals with their ID, their birth certificates, so that they have their I-9 documentation, so that they can go to work. And these are some of the supportive services that we provide at our reentry center. Again, assisting them with their I-9 documentation, birth certificates. We also have our Financial Empowerment Counseling Program that assists residents with debt reduction, savings, credit, and access to safe and affordable banking products. We also provide transportation supports, expungement, and legal services through our partners who are co-located in the space, either part-time or full-time. And then I mentioned earlier about the stipends and the milestones incentives. So individuals who are engaged in occupational skills training, we support them with a weekly stipend. And as they obtain certain milestones, we also support them with a milestone incentive, including, once they become employed, they get a milestone incentive for, when they become employed, 30 days of employment, 90 days of employment, just so that we're keeping them on the right track. And also, we support them with technology for those that are in occupations where they need access to technology. Over the last three years, just some of the impact, we've served more than 6,000 justice-impacted individuals. We place more than 1,200 in employment at an average wage of approximately $19 an hour. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Craig. Appreciate the work you guys are doing. We have a couple more presentations. One, I've got Harold Bailey, who's here, a returning citizen himself, to provide some of his insight. He's a huge advocate in this world, and wanted to give him an opportunity to share what he's seeing across the state and certainly here in Baltimore, but then also speak from his own experience. And then I've got Ambroschini Pack, who is joining us virtually, and we'll come to you right after, Harold.
Thank you, Chairman Conway, and committee members, and members of Department of Public Safety Correctional Services and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement that are here, as well as the public. I'm pleased to have this opportunity to speak about my lived experience with incarceration and reentry. I hold a master's degree in education, vocational rehabilitation counseling. I've been incarcerated for 28 years, confined in the Maryland prison system. During that time, the only job that I held was as a literacy tutor. When I came out from 20 years incarceration, from 1985 to 2005, I had a bachelor's degree. I had two years prior to going into prison, the Maryland Penitentiary, when the death penalty was in existence in this state. And I was housed in the Maryland Penitentiary when someone was executed. And I didn't realize until years later how traumatic that was to me. We went through central intake and booking, old city jail at the time, and went to the Maryland Penitentiary, and he was executed prior to 12 others that were on death row prior to him because he was convicted of killing a police officer. That was a traumatic experience, I've learned. Reentry starts from day one, has been touted by the Division of Corrections for decades now. And photo IDs, there's been Department of Transportation as a van that is supposed to go to all the prisons when these individuals are captive. You know who they are, despite of aliases. Photo IDs has not been implemented. Effectively, when I came out in 2005, and maybe that predated the van, I had incredible family support. Within 72 hours, I opened a bank account. The photo ID from the Division of Corrections was no good. The Bank of America wouldn't accept $100 from me. So I got my driver's license reissued. I also purchased a vehicle, became employed within 72 hours. So I hit the ground running, which enriches the best to prepare people, prisoners, when they come out. And I had incredible family support. Additionally, I had eight years of confinement from 2015 to 2023. I've just been out two years this month. I haven't been able to get a job. And I have applied for jobs as custodial assistant. I was willing at the time to do that, not anymore. I'm blessed to have lived as long as I have. And in spite of those years in incarceration, I have worked, starting at age 15, and paid into the Social Security system, where I'm able to draw down on my retirement. I retired early at age 62. I self-directed my rehabilitation while I was incarcerated. When I came out in 2005, I went through a series of jobs, and I got secured a job through my own efforts as a GED instructor, Baltimore City Community College. I worked at the Northwest Career Center as a GED instructor at that time. Transitions through many jobs since that time. And I have designed the curriculum, have facilitated instruction, and managed two separate employment readiness training programs in Baltimore City. The first was in 2009 at America Works. That program is still in existence. It's called the Baltimore Ex Offender Reentry Employment Program. In 2012, I received an Open Society Institute fellowship. And in partnership with Turk House for 18 months, I went to each of their four recovery centers, three in Baltimore City, one exclusively for women, and one in Howard County. My expertise is in online guided career exploration, resume preparation, mock interviewing, just to prepare individuals for the workforce. I would suggest, maybe, if you all have any influence, to increase the minimum wage, because $15 an hour is not a living wage. The reentry resources that I can cite that have been helpful to me, let me back up just a minute. I am the last living family member, so I have no one else in the world, and I've successfully reintegrated into society in the past. And the pain of my own incarcerations has led to a passion, a moral incentive, I feel, to assist others that are similarly situated. 50% of the population of incarcerates have a high school diploma, and of those 50%, many cannot read, they cannot write, and they cannot compute. So they cannot effectively navigate societal systems. They don't qualify. It's classification of disabled, but in fact, they are. So the family is integral in helping navigate the landscape of society post-release. Family support provides financial, housing, encouragement. I would say that I've been very fortunate to have the parole agent I do because the rest of the Division of Parole and Probation has been no help to me as far as employment. Another agency that has been very helpful is New Vision House of Hope for Housing. They have provided housing to me, and I have noted that they also provide housing to individuals with sexual offense. Very rare is an agency that will assist that population. The reentry resources that have been less beneficial, there are two. Eastside Career Center and the South Baltimore Employment Connection Center. At the Eastside Career Center, I was informed about a stipend training, welding. I'm not doing anything else, I'm retired, but I am volunteering at three different agencies that I'll cite across the state. And come to find, I became a welder straight out of high school. I worked at Spurrows Point Shipyard in 1980 and made two and a half times minimum wage. My siblings graduated from Yale University, Brown University, and Loyola College, University here in Maryland, and I was making more money than them. After I was laid off after just seven weeks, I enlisted in the Marine Corps, 1980, and spent three years doing that. The Eastside Career Center, when I went there, I was asking about a work opportunity tax credit. It used to be called Targeted Job Tax Credit. I learned about that when I was at America Works, implementing the program that I designed. And it is one feather in an individual's cap that has criminal history that's sitting in an interview. Work opportunity tax credit, I have since learned, is between $2,400 to $9,000. This is a tax credit for employers that will hire individuals in certain categories, disabled individuals, one, and individuals with a criminal history. The staff at the Eastside Career Center directed me to the supervisor because none of them knew about this work opportunity tax credit. The supervisor told me he didn't know anything about it. I asked him how long he'd been on staff, 10 years. I let him know in my humble opinion, even the receptionist should know this information to inform individuals that come through their doors. Federal bonding letter is the second feather in the cap for individuals with criminal history that sit for interview. And during mock interviews, I inform individuals of this. I give them handouts so that they can review this information. And when the time comes in an interview, which typically happens, why should we hire you for this job? Because I'm one of the few potential employees that could make you money with this work opportunity tax credit. Some employers don't know about it. So the vocational development that I've done is the two programs. And I've also, I've learned, I was a case manager at Prison Aid Association, agency that's no longer in existence. I was also an employment specialist. At that time, they had over 100 subsidized housing units across the city. And I learned that if you do not document your work, it never happened. So when I was a recipient of the Open Society Fellowship, I hired a lawyer to compile a training manual. It's 115 pages. It's based on a model of train the trainer. So it's not just me reaching 1, 2, 3 individuals. It is trainers that can prepare exponentially-prepared employment seekers. Literacy is a problem. Many individuals, unfortunately, don't have that support in the home. Many individuals unfortunately don't have that support in the home. When I was young, I learned to read. When I was incarcerated, I read to learn more. One instance at Maryland Correctional Training Center in preparation for my release, most recently, I asked the head psychologist if I could speak to him because many of the staff don't even, they couldn't relate to me. This head psychologist told me the only time that I could speak to him is if I was medicated. So I didn't access him. I am currently volunteering for three different agencies. The Mayor's Office of Employment, the Mayor Reentry Action Council, Mayor's Office. For the past year, I've been a member. The Prince George's Community Collaboration Center, which I go twice a month down there. And I was suggested to go down there once my background was learned by State Delegate Loric Charcutian. I was gifted with a Volunteer of the Year Award because of my efforts. In mediation, I'm currently undergoing 70 hours training. I've completed 22 hours of that. And it's not reentry specific, but mediation is to forestall any retaliatory violence for petty disputes in the home, in the neighborhood, at work, or in school settings. Baltimore City historically has been the hub of reentry services. People as far away as Annapolis will come to Baltimore City. No more. Prince George's County is the hub because of the former county executive, current Senator Angela Alsobrook. She's implemented some great work down there. And I like to share this. I have been networking for the past two years. I'm not used to traveling at horse and buggy speed. And what I have related, if difficulty is employment for me, I can only imagine that this information can be extrapolated, the experiences to individuals that are not as well-educated.
Mr. Bailey, I want to make sure we move on. If you could begin to wrap up.
Okay. One, I requested a meeting with the mayor of Baltimore City, 15-minute meeting, December of last year. And this is my last point. The scheduling team told me I'd hear from them in two weeks. At the six-month point, I let some staff at Monsey know, even if I hear back, I probably wouldn't even take the meeting. So I have found that many so-called professionals are not professional. They don't conduct themselves as such. They don't return voicemail messages or emails. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. I appreciate your story. It's a remarkable one. And I think it's indicative of some of the challenges that we continue to see in the program and the processes. And I think each of the folks that have spoken thus far have provided some light on that. I want to be careful not to challenge folks directly in that way, as you did with a member of the, this meeting, if we can avoid that. Going forward. Last but not least, I have Anne Bocini-Pack from Prepare to tell us a little bit about her experience. Anne?
Thank you. Anne, I apologize for not being able to be present today. I had a replanned trip, but I thank you for allowing me to speak in this space. I'm not going to go back over statistics that have already been given, but I will highlight that 20 years ago, when you left prison, you had about the chance of a coin flip. It was worse than a coin flip. Recidivism rates were over 50%. We are running a marathon right now, and we are doing a fantastic job. 20 years ago, 15 years ago, when I would go and try to seek treatment, they would find a reason to turn me away. And now throughout Baltimore neighborhoods, we have no wrong door services, places that I can help people get to, no matter what state they're in, no matter what they need, and connect them with the services that they need in the moment. And this is really important because Prepare is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We have a mission to empower people to make their best case for parole and develop and execute successful reentry plans. And I work with a lot of the good people that have already presented today. And what I am also, I should say, a formerly incarcerated person who has co-founded Prepare while I was incarcerated at MCIW. I started this work in 2017, was able to co-found Prepare from behind the walls in 2021, which shows the level of investment that the department has and the willingness they have to hear our voices. And after release, I've been able to scale across the state. We find many of the same things that have already been said. We develop a 12 months in advance of a parole hearing or 12 months in advance of a mandatory release, a holistic reentry plan. And that reentry plan is going to include things like housing and employment, but it's also going to include things like treatment and community support groups and even where to get your food back or where to get your clothing that you may need to go on a job interview. Part of it is finding and connecting people to those resources, but another part of it is getting them thinking about those things well in advance of their release. And that's something that I can speak to particularly well as a formerly incarcerated person, because when I was behind the walls, a lot of what I thought was if I could just get to the other side of the gatehouse, then everything would be okay. And when I was incarcerated, my definition of success was getting somebody through the gates, getting somebody a parole release. But I didn't think in the long term what that looked like afterwards. And this is reflected in the numbers that a lot of us don't, because if you look at that 27-page report that Assistant Secretary Guarino referred to, you will find the month by month of when recidivism happens. And what you'll see every year is a huge spike in the time between that kind of a couple months post-release on to 12 months post-release. There's just a huge amount of recidivism that happens in those early, early months of reentry. And a lot of that is, in my experience, us not thinking about what challenges am I actually going to face? Us not going through the statistics of our reentry plan, piece by piece, and figuring out, is this really going to work in practice? Which is why these exit orientations that Director Rappaport spoke about are so important. It's why having peer organizations like Prepare working directly with other impacted people. I can say our reentry coaches, our individuals with lived experience, we've all completed our own successful reentry. And so when we're helping somebody, we're looking at it from that perspective. And it really has to do with having as well those partnerships. I know we've heard from Moed, we've heard from Monsey. Division of Parole and Probation is not here, but they now have a social work department. They themselves, just as we do at Prepare, have peers in their offices. We have treatment centers. Like I said, you have walk-in treatment centers. You have a whole expanse of community resources that are now available through this targeted investment that has been going on for years that is bearing fruit. And that fruit is being born in what we heard earlier, Baltimore is the safest it's been in my lifetime. So how can we keep this going is coordination, right? We, right now, we have a department at the state level, working with the agencies at the city level, who are now opening the doors to people like me who have lived experience and are bringing to the table the practices that we find that work with our population. The few things that I see coming down the pike that scare me a little bit is the funding. As mentioned, the Behind the Walls program, I went in and would assist people with reentry plans. I was one of the community providers with that program. That was on ARPA money. You have a federal funding environment that is shifting. So how can we get creative in looking at funding opportunities, looking at ways that we can work together and collaborate? How can we bring funding in? We have an opportunity now with opioid money. We have an opportunity now looking at substance use disorder, something that impacts a huge number of people, both behind the walls and in the community. And something that also, through our Certified Peer Recovery Specialist Program, which is conducted as a partnership between the Department of Labor and DPSCS, of which I am actually a graduate of their first class at MCIW, where people can get vocational training while they're behind the walls. And people can come home to this field that is so readily willing to hire people with backgrounds and put us to work helping other people make a successful transition into the community. So we start working together and we look at things like that. How can we invest in programs like Behind the Walls? How might we be able to bring programs like that together to get people who are currently incarcerated on work release out into the community, working in these peer roles? What opportunities exist for us now as we look forward? Because like I said, we are running a marathon, and I think that we might be in the middle of it, but we're doing great. And I don't want us to hit a wall with some of these little bumps in the road that we're about to face. I look out and I see so many people that I work with successfully, and I know that we can, we can keep moving these, these programs forward for a, for a better future for Baltimore. And thank you for listening and thank you for letting me share here.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Anne. And I appreciate your experience as well and your advocacy on this work. Councilman Blanchard, I understand you have to leave it a few, and I'm sure you have a ton of questions in light of all that you've heard, so I'm going to hand off to you first.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Conway. Thank you both, to both of you gave testimony. I will briefly say that I have an immediate family member who spent four years of my childhood in Louisiana State Prison and, and watching them, this was back before things like ban the box and whatnot were popular, perhaps. And, and like, it was hard for him to find a place to rent, right? Like, just like the incredible amount of barriers available structurally, not just socially at the time. So the work that all of y'all are doing is incredibly important and valuable, both to individuals and to our communities. Couple notes. One, I feel like it's rare that we have a hearing like this where I don't find it very relevant to point out to whoever from MOGR is here at the time. And so for Ty Lord, this is the, the part of the hearing where I thank the mayor for his leadership on the Housing Options Opportunities Package that, his bill specifically, I mean, whether we're talking about homeless individuals, whether we're talking about returning citizens, et cetera, et cetera. Director Mavronis, Mavronis made the point about how incredibly important housing is and having housing that is where people need it at prices they can afford it at is, you know, this is another very important category of citizens who need this, and that legislation is going to play a really important role in allowing for that. So thank you to the mayor and his team there. The, also, I appreciate Dr. Mavronis for noting, noting the point about the Returning Citizens Beyond the Wall program. And so if I understand it correctly, so the, the funding, it's ARPA-funded, and so that is, that's running out for this, at the end of this calendar year? Like, when is that money gone?
The ARPA money concluded, I think, at the end of June of this year.
Okay, gotcha. So this is something, the program has been suspended due to lack of funds, and it would be something that your office is hopeful to get into the budget for FY '27?
Definitely want to see the program continue. I think we have a lot of analysis to do of the program that occurred, just getting a better sense of what actual, like, monthly rosters of, you know, the people who are eligible for work release look like, how much funding we would need to sustain that. You know, I'll defer specific requests about budget figures and things to the administration, to the Government Relations Office. But, but we definitely want to see the program continue. And I think what ARPA allowed us to do was show proof of concept that this is something that's, that's worthwhile to invest in, that it has transformative potential. And while the employment component has suspended, all of the funds that were invested from ARPA went directly into the wages for the returning citizens. It was a simple budget in that way. But while that part has been suspended for now, the partnership with Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services in no way has. So still looking to make sure that that's, that's as strong as ever.
Yeah. Yeah, all great to be aware of on that one. The, one question I had, kind of in this whole sort of conversation, I know, I think it's something like this year compared to, I know arrests have gone up in the city a little bit in '25, over '24, over '23. But compared back to like early 2010s into 2000s and the 90s, I mean, the, my understanding is I think we're at like, in the city, we're resting at like one-fifth the rate that we were 15 years ago. And there's just sort of national trend in, I saw that I think there are more incarcerated individuals who are in their 60s now than in their early, than in their 20s. It's something of that effect. What does it do to have, which is good, obviously, right? That we have a lot fewer individuals going through this process. But what does it, what does it mean for DPSCS that we have such a big drop in, in the population that is, you know, incarcerated and set to return?
You're absolutely correct, Councilman. When we take a look at even the commitment rates coming into custody and releases prior to the COVID period, we're still lower than we were back then, which is, I think, the direction that, you know, we all see as perhaps a more sensible approach. What I will say is that it's, you know, like many other environments, less is not always less. While we are seeing a reduction in the overall number of individuals being sentenced to the Division of Public Safety and Correctional Services, what is then changing is the length of those sentences that they're serving. And in many instances, what we would consider maybe the acuity of those individuals. Individuals coming in perhaps with more traumatic brain injuries, individuals coming in with different levels of need. And what that means to us, and, you know, I was remiss in maybe not framing this, I'm very grateful to Anne for mentioning it, is that when we take a look at our cohorts and our reentry populations, it's more of a formula for where the need is and where we have to direct services. So a graying population behind the wall means more supports for individuals returning over the age of 50, especially those who may not yet have health, healthcare access in the way that older returning individuals will. It also means a greater accessibility of substance use treatment services. That's something that the state is pursuing in partnership with the Maryland Department of Health in our reentry 1115 expansion waiver. But especially it means that the interventions that we're intending and the eligibility criteria of available programming has to meet the population, 86% of whom are serving a sentence for a crime against another person. So when we take a look at some of those incentives that were made available under the Justice Reinvestment Act, and we take a look at, you know, what jobs may be available, we have to face the fact that a number of these individuals may be coming back with lengthier criminal histories, potentially crimes of violence under 14101, and making sure that we're not leaving them out of meaningful transformative rehabilitation opportunities.
Yeah, so with the, the drop in who gets incarcerated, you have, you're more likely to have incarcerated individuals who are, either have more violent histories or sort of like higher acuity, like have more challenges like in their life psychologically, health-wise, social, that's going to make it harder for them to succeed in their return to society. And so it's, that's a really interesting point. And then my very last question. The, the, can someone talk about the Office of Returning? I guess it's probably Monsey, but the Office of Returning Citizens. So that is, that is still being stood up? Or, and I'm sorry if I'm looking at the wrong person, but this, that's still being stood up? And what exactly is it supposed to do?
So the Office of Returning Citizens, per the legislation that was passed by the city council, established an Office of Returning Citizens under the banner of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. That would be the office that, you know, under which all of the reentry work services, local coordination would sit, also the operation of the Reentry Action Council. While our reentry services are active within the agency, as I mentioned, the office was created without any accompanying funding or positions. And so to the extent that it's stood up, you know, we still have investment to make into that office. Like I mentioned at the, during my presentation, we have one dedicated reentry coordinator, and soon we'll be bringing on a dedicated housing coordinator to assist with some of those grant-related responsibilities. We did see an increase in, within the fiscal year 26 budget for Monsey, two positions that are core to the operation of reentry services within our team, the Chief of Community Engagement and Opportunity, under which reentry sits, and our reentry coordinator, both were previously ARPA-funded. Those were built into the budget for fiscal '26. ARPA funded, those were built into the budget for fiscal 26. So we are seeing sort of like that, that incremental investment into the office, but we have work to do for sure.
Okay. And, and so those roles for that office will be presumably kind of pins moved from either MONC or MoED? Like, like if it's, if it's unstaffed, right, then the positions would come from folks who are currently working for MONC or for MOED? Is that the thought process? Like where, where do we get the, the people in that office from? I guess it's still.
I think there would need to be the, the creation of positions that are dedicated for that office. I know like if we were to take other pins that exist within MONC, for example, we would be taking them from other areas of programming that we're also mandated to do. So we don't have the, the ability to do that today, but I'm hopeful that it's something and actively engage in conversation with the administration, something that we can plan for and invest in over time. And in the short term, we have a lot of partnerships to leverage. I think what is one thing we're very committed to doing is making sure the work isn't just stopped because we have some investment to do in fully building out, you know, what should be a full-fledged Office of Returning Citizens. But, you know, the positions can't come out of thin air, so we have some work to do there too.
I'll say this. One, I really appreciate the data that you guys were able to share today. What would actually help better inform potentially future budgets that might allow us to fund some of the efforts in the Office of Returning Citizens would be that sort of breakdown of how many folks are impacted and what the actual outcomes and results of those Safe Return Plans are and their outcomes. So like you provided here the 224 plans and the different types of plans that people needed. What would be interesting for me is whether or not these folks recidivated or not and whether or not these plans made some difference beyond recidivation in their overall well-being, you know? So for folks who are now in housing, let's say this happened in 2023 or 2024, where are they now? How are they doing? Are they more stable? And did this, did these plans that your office was able to help with have a significant impact on their outcomes compared to the additional 1,770-something people that didn't get plans and didn't get support so that we can really defend putting general funds toward this office in the future? Does that make sense?
Definitely. And I think some of those plans now that were, for some of the people I mentioned before, like we worked with in returning citizens behind the wall, we did Safe Return Planning with them, not all of them have been released yet and some of them may have only been released for a short amount of time. But through the partnership with, with DPSES, I think we have a great opportunity to make sure we're able to track recidivism in those same ways. Like we obviously want to know who's coming back from a new offense versus someone who had a technical violation that's sending them back. But absolutely, we're thinking about it in similar ways and I hope to be able to share that kind of data with the council on a future hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Along those lines, I'm, I'm very curious. So Craig, you brought up some of the things that, that you guys sort of provide regarding supportive services for folks who are returning citizens. And my immediate thought, you, you brought up driver's licenses, birth certificate, financial empowerment counseling, transportation assistance, expendment services, stuff like that. Some of those things I feel like we can either provide or even line up behind the wall and I'm sure we do that. I'm sure, I'm curious what, what we can do or if there's any additional coordination that can happen to as much as possible provide folks returning with these critical, essentially paperwork, with critical paperwork before they come out.
Yeah, and thank you for that question. We have memorandums of understanding from the Social Security Administration, vital records and the MVA. There's a timeline that we apply for certain documents. You need two documents in order to get a, a real ID. You need your birth certificate and you need your social security card. We cannot start that process of doing a social security card until 180 days before somebody's leaving. That's a projected release date. The department, we have.
Wait, by, by law you cannot?
By our MOU.
Oh, okay.
That's a federal restriction.
That's a federal.
Federal restriction.
And so we've, we've had multiple discussions, we've tried to educate the federal stakeholders of what is that, what, what that causes. Because on, on, in any case, if we have a projected release date, let's say of 180 days and we have some credits and it's moving, so it might not be six months, it could be three months and then we're scrambling. So it is, and we try to educate our community partners as well. It is frustrating on the, the fact that we are doing everything we can, but we have those restrictions. We have some success stories about that and we, we just did an innovative project to ask the incarcerated population on their tablets, we did a survey. Do you know how to get, do you know the importance of having an ID? And we got a response rate of about 15%. And we did a video to give them the opportunity to go to their case managers and apply and really try to engage with the case management team at six months to try to see if that trajectory will go up. So we're hoping to find that, there's an increase in that by doing it right away and not delaying anything at that point.
Yeah, it was interesting. So, so Mr. Bailey talked about a couple of things, reading, writing, educational components, basic math and, and otherwise, that folks come out of prison and don't have those core skillsets on top of paperwork and stuff like that. And really makes me wonder, you know, I, I know folks are eligible for education otherwise behind the wall, but it, it really makes you wonder where some of the low-hanging fruit exists there and, you know, even for some of the ID components, if we can just, you know, automate or streamline or what exists there for us to make that as easy as possible for folks? Because, you know, we have, they're not, they're a captive audience for the months that they're behind bars. And if we can, I'm not sure what the barriers are while behind bars for getting that paperwork, but I'd be very curious to see if there's ways to streamline or automate that information because I would imagine a lot of the information necessary, you probably gather through the legal system that puts them behind bars. So all the verification, all that stuff happens after an arrest or judgment or whatever the case is. So, yeah, I, I think there's got to be a way to, you know, cut some of the red tape there. So I, just a thought as I was.
Right. And, and it is a priority for the department because we know that identification and vital documents are critical to anything, any access to any services.
So I, I, I'll say this, I, I brought everybody here today because I realize that this is an issue that will always be. And if we make critical tweaks to our systems, we can really see significant benefits for folks on the tail end. And we have all the right people here today, folks with lived experience and you guys that are trying to provide services and opportunities for folks. And you're the folks who really understand some of the barriers that exist. And it sounds like we've made some significant progress in the last couple of years, which is great, which is really encouraging and, and I applaud, you know, MONC for, you know, the program that they've rolled out. I think this is exactly the kind of stuff that we need to continue to support people. But I see this as an opportunity, you know, when someone commits a crime, and I've said this, Stephanie's heard this a bunch of times, Aaron has heard this a bunch of times, when someone commits a crime, they're waving a red flag telling us that they're having issues. There are pressures in their lives, instabilities otherwise, that, that lead them to make a decision to, you know, commit a crime. Now, once that person has waved that red flag, whatever justice may be, it is our opportunity to do everything in our power to prevent that person from making that mistake again. Sometimes that's enforcement, but sometimes that's just help. Sometimes just it's housing, it's a job, it's education, it's an opportunity, it's a, you know, a job at 20 bucks an hour that can make all the difference in making sure that that person doesn't make that mistake again. And I think as someone here alluded to, each person is going to have a different need. Not everybody needs housing, not everybody's going to need a job or mental health support. Some people may need all of it. But as we think about how to better support folks, I just, I want to continue to pull everybody together and, and think together about how we can streamline these efforts or improve these efforts. Because I think, you know, folks want, folks who are coming out of prison to succeed, we, we don't want folks to be a burden and they certainly don't want to be a burden on their communities if they can avoid it. And instances where folks are and they don't care, then we'll, we'll see them again. But I, most, most don't want to go back. And so we don't want them to go back either. Councilman Gray, any questions?
I just want to thank everyone for being here and thank you for sharing your, your experiences. I wanted to look at the Safe Return Plan and Common Needs. So it says Safe Returns Plan developed to date was 224. That's not for the year end, right? It's over the course since the creation of the program?
I think we began, I need to check to be sure, at least since the beginning of 2024.
Okay. All right. So it is pretty accurate. So for the 159 folks that had a plan included, the grant was only able to help 33 of them, correct? For the, I'm sorry, I'm jumping all over the place.
You're talking about the, where housing was identified as a need, the 159?
Yes, and through the ARPA funding, yeah.
So the, so the state grant that we got did support those 33 people. I think we got the state grant probably midway into our creation of some of these Safe Return Plans. So for those, again, not all of those 159 plans and people who had those plans that were identified have yet been released. Some of them may still be kind of in that work of preparing. But for the grant that we did have, it did support 33 people. As we're preparing to deploy the fiscal year $26, once we get Board of Estimates approval, we are considering how we can like extend that in the greatest way possible so that we're helping people get on their feet, but possibly able to serve more people with the funds that we have. But to your point, and like I've shared during my presentation, housing is by far the greatest need. The expensive housing, increasing rent prices, even being able to find landlords who don't, who are willing to work with people who are returning citizens, because I think that's something that we've navigated a lot, is just at times the bias that may exist, the perception that like these are not people who can be trusted to live in their own spaces is something that needs to be overcome and we need more resources in this area, absolutely.
Yep. And, and so that's what I wanted to kind of highlight. Are, are you guys working outside of like receiving the state funding? Are there any other alternatives or innovative ways you guys are looking at it to help address like the other folks? I know that everyone looks at MONC as like the one-stop shop. And so I also look to you to at least have some type of ideas. I know you can't do everything, but are you guys working towards any new innovative plans to kind of address that or, you know, hand off those folks that you aren't able to help to maybe other partner organizations?
We are trying to leverage partnerships in that space. So I will say though, talking to partners for people who do serve this population, this is still one of their greatest needs and even just finding the physical spaces where people can go, for people who want to stay in the Baltimore area, who want to be in, in this region. There's a need both for financial support to assist with housing costs and there's a need for more spaces that are suitable for someone who is coming out of incarceration. Because I know, like I had a conversation, a great conversation last week with the team at University of Maryland in Brice Center, just talking about the realities and struggle with housing, the number of people who leave our institutions who may not even have a substance use program, who have to enroll in a residential program with substance use rules in order just to have a shelter. Those are not the kind of things that we want to see people having to go to just as a term of their release or being, you know, by way of being a returning citizen. So this is something, I will tell you every single month, that we've been convening people, returning citizens, other stakeholders in this space with the Reentry Action Council. Housing is something we're consistently talking about and it's on the minds of everyone in a time when resources can be scarce in this area. I'm a believer that we have to leverage the partnerships because we all may know different people. MONC, for our part, will continue to cultivate relationships with, with private landlords too, who are, are open to working in this space and who understand the work we're doing and who believe in giving people a second chance. So we'll continue to cultivate the relationships. We're always going to be keeping an eye out for additional grant funds and, and even looking at the ways, you know, possibly in future budgets that we can make some additional direct investment into this space.
Yeah, thank you for that. And one, what you just said actually leads me to my second, my follow-up to the housing. As someone who grew up in Baltimore City his entire life and had members of my family that were incarcerated and then released, I, I know that one of the biggest de facto factors, at least anecdotally, is that person returning to that same neighborhood. You guys could do all the work to change them, but they get around all their friends that were not incarcerated, they have not changed. And whether that's substance abuse or just staying out of the life of crime, often going back to that very neighborhood can be a, the actual detriment and, and actually contributes to them coming right back to prison. How are you guys addressing that? Are you guys giving any advice? Are you working to actively ensure or give advice to say, hey, maybe you might want to move to the east side if you live on the west side or to this neighborhood to get yourself on your feet and then you're stable and then when you're stable, by all means, you know, you're free to move anywhere. Are there, are there any types of talks like that going on or have you guys looked into that?
I know in the process of developing Safe Return Plans, I think, you know, for our, for people who are returning home to Baltimore who are currently incarcerated, many of them are keenly aware of some of the, the risk involved that you just mentioned. I know when we're having conversations about housing and developing that individualized plan, it's not rare for someone to, to say just that, like, I, I can't go here or maybe I want to explore housing in a different space. Like I want to be close to Baltimore, but maybe, maybe just outside or something. So I would say that these are, these are absolutely conversations that are happening. We always want to give people self-determination in what they know is best for them. But I think also for people who are preparing to return home, when they're thinking about what they're going to need to be successful, you know, our reentry coordinator is starting each and every conversation off with like, what do you need so that you don't come back here? And I think it opens up the conversation a little differently of whether that's housing, whether that's looking to get your, you know, on a stable plane that maybe is outside of the neighborhood that you came up in. All of those things are happening as a, a facet of those conversations.
Yeah. And I just have one more question, Chair. For the mental health support, it says 34. How are you identifying folks that actually need that help? Because I would, I would venture to say everyone that leaves out of prison needs mental health support, whether it's from actual prison or the, or anything that contributed to them going to prison. And so we know how important mental health is and, but we also know that most of the folks that are probably coming home are people of color and how when people of color commit a crime, they're just criminals while other people commit a crime and it's always linked to something that happened or some, or some type of mental health issue. And so in trying to make sure that we have true equity, how are you guys identifying the 34 versus the other ones? And is there any type of continued work that, that partners have? Because I know once again, you guys can't do everything, but partners have, are you guys looking to do to make sure that everyone has on the base level like some type of mental health support leaving from prison?
Sure. And I'll, in just a moment, I'll turn it over to Kyla Graves, who's been serving as our, our reentry coordinator, really sitting with people, having those conversations, who can speak to how this has come up in conversation, how people self-identify that need. What I'll say is that we have a roster of partners who provide therapy, group support, just a number of things that speak to mental health and support people with their mental health needs. Many of them work with us already in the victim services space. And so we have providers who understand that when we need to make a connection as the city government agency, we need that connection to be now. We, someone doesn't need to just kind of sign up and, and wait months and months to get an appointment. So we've been cultivating those relationships. We have a lot of providers who are committed in this area. And I'll let Kyla speak a little bit to how that's come up in some of those conversations.
Press the button on the right.
Press the button on the right and then state your name.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So, typically when I've, I'm sorry, I'm Kyla Graves. I'm the reentry coordinator with Monty. I go behind the wall and meet with the incarcerated individuals, and we develop a Safe Return Plan. So, typically, how the mental health is identified is those 30-something people, they were the ones who were honest to say, I actually need the mental health. It is a barrier for, especially men, to, and African-American men, to come out and say that I need help. Most of the incarcerated individuals that I meet with have been incarcerated for over 10 years. So, they don't necessarily feel like I need help. What I need help with is housing. What I need help with is employment. They don't necessarily think mental health is a thing. What I do every month, though, is I keep trying to push, like, you know, you have been in here for 10 years. It's different when you come outside. You know, outside is fast. It's faster than being incarcerated for 10 years, and it may be a culture shock. So, it would be good to have that support. I've been with, with my community-based organizations coming, most of them all offer some sort of mental help. So, if I'm connecting them to the case management, they are still having those conversations, trying to get them connected to the mental health.
Yeah. And I thank you for that answer. Because I, I mean, I had a family member who went to jail in, like, 1983 and came home in 2000, I don't know, like, eight or, and just seeing the transition and how that person tried to just cope with the realities of life, like, leaving when there was a boombox and then coming home when there was an iPad, like, something like that you don't think about, but just like, life moved on. And the rationalization probably for that person didn't hit until, you know, you're a week or two or three months in. And that's really tough. And so, I know that you guys can't do that, but just, I just wanted to highlight that, just to see, just that the, if the prison system is committed to ensuring that people are going home and not coming back, that there has to be some type of investment into mental health. Because these folks, whether you're there for 20 years or two months, it's not a normal circumstance for anyone to be in prison. And so, some type of mental health support has to be there. And I thank you for all the work that you do and Monty and all of our partners. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Gray. I think we're out of questions here. We do have some time and space for public testimony. We have three folks signed up. I'm gonna afford two minutes of public testimony, first, starting with Jeanette Graham. And Ms. Graham, when you come up, you press the button on the right side. Perfect. There you go.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jeanette Graham. I'm the founder and executive director of No Struggle, No Success. It's a full-service reentry program for youth and adults throughout the state of Maryland, where we depersonalize reentry plans of 220 annually. I've been doing this work since 2018. There was no reentry roadmap at the time that I did this. I interviewed 22 different agencies and organizations at that time, and it was more so of a drug program, not a holistic-based approach or evidence-based approach. The word "reentry" was never used back then, which was, felt like two seconds ago. And so, it was real bad minimum, and it wasn't enough. With my leadership in reentry, I've been able to save the state of Maryland over $6 million. This is showing exactly the reason why reentry is very important and why they're not returning back to prison through the eyes of No Struggle, No Success. This also includes, in those reentry home plans, it is mandatory that someone has mental health. It is mandatory that someone gets restored to justice when they enter my program, simply because what they were exposed to before prison, during prison, and to prepare them when they come home. The needs of people are far more than drug treatment. Why did many pick up from the very beginning? They have been faced with poverty, grief, trauma, and lack of opportunities. After incarceration, those basic human challenges remain, and their families aren't even prepared for them when they come home. The battle of growth and accountability is much. Most of the time, let's be clear, that people are gonna come home regardless, whether on parole, sentence modification, or mandatory release. NSNS have walked out over 200 individuals from prison personally. These individuals are in our neighborhoods, they are in our schools, our workplace, our banks, and our malls. Why not find the real solutions to ensure that these struggles are addressed? I am the only female multicultural woman in the state of Maryland that do this without any university or any hospital doing it. I do support and I do appreciate Monty and DCPS for having MOU agreements and collaborations so I can get the work done. There's enough research, there's enough statistics out here. Is that people for me?
You can finish up. Go ahead.
Okay. There's enough research out here. There's mountains of it. It tells the same story where the prison, preschool-to-prison pipeline exists, when there's a lack of correction officers and police officers, lack human service training, when judges and lawyers and prosecutors lack basic reentry awareness. Little to no access to healthcare, group counseling, digital and financial literacy skills, there's always gonna be a gap in public safety for myself and others around. Typically, NSNS do serve individuals 10 years to life. They don't fit into the traditional of getting vital records. They come out in different ways, so it's really hard for a grassroots organization to get it done, but we've been able to get it done with the resources we have, bad minimum. Imagine if we had the support of you guys and others around to ensure that reentry program does exist for those ones that serve in time. I'm never gonna be here to complain. I'm always gonna be a part of the solution. We need funding, we need resources. The framework has been done by community-based organizations.
If you can begin to wrap up.
I'm sorry, I am. And then, families do struggle, but they don't want their loved ones to stay behind, so they give an address. It's very important that individuals have a reentry home plan. Thank you for today.
Thank you so much, Ms. Graham. Next up, we have Candy Kerr.
I'm Candy Kerr, Communications Manager at Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition. I wanna get this all in, so I'm gonna speak quickly and I can send it to you later. Returning citizens, particularly within the first two weeks of release, face a risk of opioid overdose that is estimated to be 40 times higher than that of the general population. I wanna shout out Baltimore Jail Support for setting up outside of Central Booking an intake center, and BHOI for being outside the intake center, offering Narcan and other services. Some of the neighborhoods with the highest number of returning citizens are returning to neighborhoods with the highest levels of drug use and overdoses within the city, and those areas are predominantly black. Thankfully, the city has a lot of programs to help reentry for returning citizens who have substance abuse disorder, including drug court, in which the recidivism rates of people returning are lower than those who haven't gone to drug court. But a lot of programs are outside of the areas with the highest levels of returning citizens and drug use in the community. In addition to more traditional methods of supporting returning citizens who use drugs, in order to catch people who are falling through the cracks, there are harm reduction strategies such as SSPs, drop-in centers, and OPCs, which are overdose prevention centers. They can be implemented within those areas and improve quality of life. SSPs can provide access to services such as naloxone, the overdose prevention drug, new tools for use, and testing strips. Beyond those services, we can also connect people to physical and mental health help, housing, jobs, and expungement fares. Drop-in centers typically provide all of those things, as well as give people the chance to access meals, a shower, and clothing, and can act as a place for people to receive their mail. Overdose prevention centers provide all of those things, with the distinction to allow people to use their pre-obtained drugs in a space where they can be monitored to catch an overdose before it becomes fatal. As you've heard, all these harm reduction services can build on one another. At BHRC, we're a syringe service program and have helped people connect to the legal services they may need after being picked up or detained. As well as providing services, data shows the implementation of SSPs in Baltimore City do not significantly increase crime. Neither does crime increase around OPCs in New York City, too. Also, when looking at quality of life, crimes, survival rates, or survival labor, SSPs, drop-in centers, and OPCs can help with loitering, drug use, public drug use, sex work, and access to housing beyond living in abandoned buildings and more. Focusing on these public health services are only one piece of support for returning citizens, but are crucial for those returning who use drugs.
Thank you, Candy, and I always appreciate your advocacy on the harm reduction front. Last but not least on this list is Donald Smothers.
Good afternoon, Chair. My name is Donald Smothers.
You can lift the mic up, that way we can hear you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Donald Smothers. This Monty program, this reentry program, really helped me a lot. I wouldn't even be speaking on this podium today if it wasn't for them. I came home, I had life plus 28 years and six months, something that I was not involved in. I was young. I didn't know the law. I had to study the law and then come home. I had two co-defendants, too. Both of us are home today. But when I got released from doing 17 years, I was released with $50, no ID, no nothing. It took more than $50 to get where I was going, my destination. Now, coming home from 17 years, just like I hear someone saying, radios has changed. My three-year-old grandson showed me how to work the radio. I didn't know about home, audio, none of that. So, when I came home, I was like a three-year-old baby. So, I kept being around the same people and going around the same neighborhood with the same mass mindset because I'm around these people. What this program did for me, stopped me from being incarcerated, because when I came home before, I was going back and forward to prison. But I realized I didn't have a foundation. This program gave me a foundation, gave me a job, helped me with employment, anything I asked them for, they was there for me. And they put me where I needed to be, the lane that I needed to be in, they put me in that lane. So, I thank y'all for this program, and it helped me a lot, and I'm very reformed from this. I work for Catholic Charities right now, St. Street. So, thank y'all for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Smothers. And I think your story is exactly why we're having this conversation. And the lessons that we learn from you and experience from people who've gone through similar experiences as you is exactly why we're having this conversation. We don't want that to happen to folks. We want people to hopefully land as close as possible on two feet so they can, you know, move in the right direction and be productive citizens in our city. It's to their benefit, and it's certainly to our city's benefit. So, I wanna thank you. I appreciate your testimony and appreciate your story. And likewise, Mr. Bailey, and likewise, Ms. Pack, joining us virtually. I think it's really, really important for us to appreciate what people are experiencing. And as we continue to improve, as we already have, and we are always looking to do more, I wanna thank the folks who are doing this work and our agencies. Thank you, DPSCS. Thank you, Monty, for continuing to try to innovate on this work. Thank you, MOED, for doing all the hard work, supporting folks who don't have the pieces they need. And I'm gonna push us and encourage us to continue to do more, because I think, you know, to the slide that you presented earlier, Ms. Mefronis, 40%, 40% of the folks who are returning from state prisons are coming back home, or at least call Baltimore home in that moment. And anything that we can do to support that 40%, I think benefits Baltimore. So, that is all I have for public testimony. Is there anyone else who would wish to testify that is here today? All right. I wanna thank everybody for coming out. This hearing is in recess.